Good morning and welcome. Mr.?
Good morning. I'll turn the application in.
Yes. This morning, I think our hearts are heavy but pointed, I hope collectively, in one direction. Our nation has had awful tragedies over the last month. And personally, when I am at my weakest moment, I often turn to the 23rd song and I would like for you all to share that with me this morning. "The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures; he leads me beside the still water. He restores my soul; he leads me in the path of righteousness for his name's sake. Ye though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thou rod and thou stay out they comfort me. Thou prepares a table for me in the presence of my inness. Thou norteth my head with oil; my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I will dwell in the house of the Lord's heaven." And I would like for us to have a moment of silent prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I get to the agenda, I want to welcome back our Bexar Director, Dear Ronald Lee. So glad to see you get back. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes? There are any corrections? Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Certainly.
If we've got a motion on the floor or is any discussion? I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Adjustment of the agenda, Mr. Wood.
We have two things. One, under unfinished business, we'd like to walk on the contract with Open Broadband to do a pilot project for Wi-Fi broadband. And we'll go into more details there. And then, number six, we have a replacement for the memo you were given on that, and we've gone over that at the eight o'clock meeting. And then, as number, inserted is number eight, is a motion to declare some property surplus, which we wanted to walk on. And I believe that's everything.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Okay. Is there any other changes to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as discussed?
Certainly.
Motion on the floor or is any more discussion? I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Okay. We have a special recognition. And we've got a good friend of mine, Sylvania Whuperson, who's going to come up and speak to us this morning. Come to the podium, sir, if you would. Good morning.
I'm here for the purpose of, as you know, back in August, the first, the Military Order to Purple Heart and the wounded warrior family and the Ford Foundation started out, vehicles started out across the country on a 5,800 mile trip. The first stop on that trip across the states was here in Goldsboro. And Goldsboro was the first stop, and it was where we sort of set the pace for the rest of the stop. There were fifty-something stops across the states. And the other states, they sort of pigged back on us because they watched what we did because the news media, the local and national news media followed us all the way across the states. So they pigged back, and it made this a very successful operation for the Military Order to Purple Heart. And I'm here on behalf of the Chapter 657 here in Goldsboro as a commander to present to the board a certificate of appreciation for your support in the 2007 Purple Heart Truck Run stop in Goldsboro, North Carolina. Your contribution greatly contributed to the overall success of this operation for the National Truck Run. So I'd like to present this to...
Okay, gentlemen, if we could come on down up front. I didn't present it. [inaudible] This is their correct copy from back in the office. I'd like to go behind the next. Okay. All right, it's time for public comments. Anybody who wants to make a public comment, you've got four minutes. If you come to the mic, give us your name, address, and phone number. Just for the record, name, address, and phone number.
Hi, my name is Greg Karnes. I am at 51 East Fourth Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101. And what was the last one? Sorry.
Yeah. And phone number.
And phone number, 734-678-5453. Michigan transplant to Winston-Salem. Again, my name is Greg Karnes. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of EMS Management and Consultants. We're the billing provider for the county and have been that for 14 years now. So we're here to speak briefly in relation to the motion to award our existing contract to Change Healthcare. We've been in a relationship with the city for 14 years, or the county for 14 years, delivering what we think is great service. We have an enforceable contract that was renewed in November of 2016, and I believe you have a letter to that regard from our attorney that was sent yesterday, following multiple conversations around that matter. We've read all the correspondence that's related to this matter that's been made public. There were a number of inaccuracies in it. I want to make sure we correct it for your consideration. One is that we were referred to as EMS Source. That is a different company. It's not us. We are a North Carolina company, been in business for 21 years, providing, I think, great service to 50, can't help me, I think it's 49 counties in North Carolina and over 100 agencies versus the four, I think, that were listed for us. So we're well-known, well-respected, well-liked in North Carolina. There's also a reference to a visit with New Brunswick or Brunswick County as a reference that they used a vendor called AMB. That's inaccurate. They actually use us, and they're a happy customer of ours. So we feel like there are a number of things being represented inaccurately, probably the most important of which is the rate discussion and the impact of the county of that rate adjustment. So in a show of good faith, we decided to respond to an RFP that was put out for our services even though we have a valid and enforceable contract signed by the county. But we decided in good faith to respond to that and lower our rate. So that lowered rate was misrepresented, we believe, in the correspondence because our rate included the software that the paramedics use to document EMS situations. Without that included, the rate difference is very small. So there was a comment made, I believe that the savings we moved about $150,000 for the county annually, we believe that's completely inaccurate. Billing is a function of the rate you charge and the collections that you receive. So Change Healthcare has promised to collect, not even a lift from where we're at, but almost as much as we do. So the only difference could be in the rate. So, but the rate, real rate differential has to include the software. And when you include the software that we proposed as part of our rate, and you factor in our price for that software, which is $17,000 less than what the county has been quoted, the difference is very small. We believe it's about $15,000 to $20,000. And that evaporates in a split second. If they miss collections by any small percentage, we calculated it to be by .2 of 1%, they can miss collections, and that advantage evaporates, along with a 14-year relationship with the North Carolina company. So we believe that there's great risk for the county in a transition, that it's unwarranted, and it's also backed by an enforceable contract. So we'd like that for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Ken Stanley. My address is 1804 Ridge Oaks Drive in Oak Ridge, North Carolina. So Guilford County resident. Been to the county many times. I've served as the executive liaison, I serve as the chief customer...
Phone number.
Oh, phone number, I'm sorry. I serve as the chief customer officer for EMS Management and Consultants, same company that Greg represents. I've been the executive liaison for the Wayne County EMS contract since 2004, when we started doing business together. We're local to North Carolina, as Greg mentioned, but also just the liaison and advocacy that we provide. Back in 2008, the county decided to go into the non-emergency transportation business. And we were a big part of that, working alongside the net director at that time, working through all of the necessary compliance risks. As you all know, there's a local company here that's recently gone out of business because of how heavily regulated this type of business is. And the company that you all are choosing to go to do not have a non-emergency reference in the state of North Carolina. We think that that is of particular importance to you and to the board, just because of all the inherent risks that come with the non-emergency business. Part of my responsibilities with the county and working with both the EMS director and the Wayne net director, I've been here in person many, many times. I would say probably five to six times a year. Many times there was a new contract with a nursing facility, with a hospital, we were here in person, providing that level of support, helping them with the contract administration, setting up those contracts to be sure that they are compliant with CMS and Medicare and Medicaid services. Working with the facilities, recently, as the large non-emergency business went out of business here in the county, they took over a lot of that business. And so we were here providing in-person trainings, not only at the actual facilities, at the hospital, at the nursing facilities, but also at their organization, where we were setting up open training sessions to help them with some of the regulatory requirements. Some of the non-emergency services require them to go out and get prior authorization. So we kind of locked arms with EMS director here and provided that level of training and worked with the facilities to be able to provide that level of support. So we just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that the level of support that we've provided over the last few years to the county.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would care to speak this morning? All right. Public comment section is closed, and it's now a little after 9:15. We have public hearings for the following rezoning requests, and I'll ask Mr. Crumpler to come up.
Take each one of these individually, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Item number one on the public hearing is the planning department received a petition for Mr. Robert E. Perkins to rezonate .65 acre tract of land in the Brogdon Township from residential agricultural 20 to residential 10. RA 20 has a 20,000 square foot lot size requirement. RA 10 has a 10,000 square foot lot size requirement. Property is located at the intersection of South US 13th Highway and Waldrop Road, which is an unpaved road. Subject site is further identified as tax parcel IDs 2587-544271 and 2587-545468. Property currently has one house and one mobile home on site. The zoning change will allow for two additional lots to be subdivided. This will allow the owner to install two additional residential structures. Property is bordered on all sides by residential uses. Property is identified within an urban transition area on the Wayne County growth strategy map. This petition did go before the Wayne County Planning Board, and the Planning Board recommended that the zoning change be approved.
Is anyone in the public who wants to speak during this part of the public hearing? If not, number two.
Item number two. Zoning map change. The planning department received a petition for Mr. Mike Thornton to rezonate 19.76 acres in the Brogdon Township from light industry to residential agricultural and agricultural 20 to residential agricultural 30. Light industry and RA 20 zones have a 20,000 square foot lot size requirement, and RA 30 has a 30,000 square foot lot size requirement. Property is located on US 117, alternate 1,400 feet south of this intersection with South US 117 bypass. Subject site is further identified as tax parcel ID 2587-800769. It's currently vacant. Zoning change will allow for residential development with a minimum 30,000 square foot lot size. Uses under RA 30 will be allowed. The property is located in the 65 LDN for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and is identified as being in the airport overlay district. Noise attenuation standards of negative 25 dB L reduction must occur on all new construction. Maximum height restrictions for this zone is 35 feet above grade. Property is bordered on the north, south, and west by residential uses and by the railroad to the east. Property is identified within an urban transition area on the Wayne County growth strategy map. This request went before the Wayne County Planning Board, and they recommended that it be approved.
Questions?
Chip, you did tell us earlier that Seymour Johnson has reviewed this and they are good with it.
Yes, pending the negative 25 dB L reduction requirement. Changing the zoning to 30 has a one dwelling, it creates a density requirement of one dwelling for 30,000 square feet.
Anyone for the public to care to speak during this part of the public hearing? If not, by closing, we can take action on this. The public hearing is closed.
Both of these cases are inside the airspace control surface area for Seymour. Both of them went to Seymour for review, and as part of the evidence submitted, was the letters that came back from their base engineering on it. Both of them were advertised in the news in August. Both of them had signs placed on the property. They met all the legal requirements for advertising, and adjoining property owners were notified within 100 feet.
Is there a motion to approve?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
If you've got a motion on the floor or is any additional discussion? I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you, Chip. Thank you. No points. And unfinished business, I'll turn it over to our Public Affairs Director.
All right. It's okay, I'm gonna stand here and say that I can't.
Sure, you stand right there. If they get the camera on you.
Let's hope they can't. We have been working very hard, and by we, I mean, James Wade and I and the company that will do the commemorative bricks to get everything designed. This that you see on the board right now is the overall courtyard, and the squares that you see will be the same red colored brick. These colors are actually a little bit off, but it's as close as we can get. Will be the same red colored brick as the circle, and the circle represents a commemorative bricks. It's going to be in honor of, in memory of. We have launched a campaign. The website is going. It's Step Into the Max. And basically, we want to present this to anybody who wants to leave a lasting impression on Wayne County and our newest Pride and Joy, which will be the Maxwell Center. So this brick area that you see with the circle in the center is going to be surrounded by the same colored bricks outlined in the same wheat field colored bricks. Again, these are not exact, but let me show you a better representation, I guess. That's still going to be the wrong colors, but this lets you know that instead of it being yellow, it's actually going to be more of a wheat field type color. And as you can see, there are, it may be a little bit difficult, but there are eight by eights and four by eights. And then there are actually two different eight by eights. One can be a scripted eight by eight that individuals can purchase, and then the other is for corporations. Businesses can put their logo on there. If they choose that, it will simply be the logo. We want this. One of the biggest things James wanted is for this to be clean and aesthetically pleasing as people walked up to the Maxwell Center. So the other item that I have to show you is the order form. We have launched this not only on the website, but we've also started distributing the order forms, and we're going to be going to businesses. The Chamber is helping us. Obviously, our own Public Affairs Department, who does a phenomenal job. It's on the billboards, on Wayne Memorial, it's on Channel 10, it's on every one of our social media sites. And we're going to be presenting it to the Wayne County Public Schools, working with Ken Dirksen, with their Public Information Officer, because it's a great idea to give to a 2018 graduate, have their own little stone that says the class and the year. In addition, Christmas is right around the corner. How many parents need one more knickknack? I think we talked about that earlier. This is a great idea to give to somebody, be it spouse or your parents, grandparents, even maybe a grand new, a brand new grandbaby. So as soon as we reach the first 100, and we've already sold approximately right now about 10, as soon as we, and this is the first public notice that we've launched the campaign, so we're really proud of that, as soon as we reach 100, then they'll start putting the commemorative bricks down. So the information is on our website, it's on our social media sites, and we welcome Wayne County to Step Into the Max.
Questions, comments? Does James have it on his Maxwell Center website?
That's a very good question, and I will find out.
He should, if he doesn't.
He should.
Everybody's welcome to purchase one if they'd like to.
Carol, can you get us a few copies of this ran? So, because I run into people, there's already asking about it, and some of them are savvy enough to go online and all that kind of stuff. Some of us old and we just don't.
Yes, sir. I have multiple copies made, but I will get you all that you need.
Okay.
Just say the word. And I forgot to mention, I also released it to our department managers at the department head meeting last week, and have gotten back a really good response, and then relied on Kevin Johnson to send it off to our agricultural committee, and he actually branched that out a little wider.
Yeah, he's already done that, yeah.
So we should reach that 100 in hopefully record time.
Okay, great. Front page story, Steve. All right, moving on to the EMS billing, the questions.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thanks for having me up this morning. There are some small changes to the memo that is in your packet. It is EMS Management, and I do apologize instead of saying EMS Source. The county that we did visit was Onslow County and not Brunswick County. So Onslow recently changed over to AMB. So I apologize about that. We recently also went to Brunswick for the 911 center, so the older I get, the more confused I am. But we do have a recommendation in front of you. The memo is in your packet, and if there's any questions.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
If we have a motion on the floor or is any discussion? I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Motion approved. Thank you. Moving on, Mr. Wood, an update on Canterbury Village Street?
Yeah, I just wanted to give you all a brief update on that. We have hit a few delays, primarily because we've had some utility conflicts there. We've dealt with Duke Energy on some. We've dealt with the phone company and internet. And also, we've had at least two, I think maybe three, water line conflicts, and we've worked well with the water district, and I want to give them credit for that. They've moved very quickly on that. So with that, there may be some delays, and we may not make the time limit that we wanted to, but the project is still well under the estimate that we gave originally, because as y'all recall, when we got bids in, it was well over 400,000 or less, I believe, than what the engineers' estimate had been. So even with some of these add-ons, it'll still be substantially below what the engineers' estimate was when we had the public hearing and talked to people about that. So, but I did want the public to know that we have hit some utility conflicts, and that is going to eat up some time.
Questions, comments?
I just want to be clear for the public, George, what is the exact figure of the contract additions at this point? That's not part of the original contract. How much are we at at this time, at this point?
We're probably up to about 80,000.
But that's not going to be added to the, that's going to be added to?
It will be added to.
Okay, so all of that...
But it will still be lower when we do it. In other words, we started out saying, I think it was going to be 2.1 million.
Yeah.
Contract came in at about 1.7, so if you do this, this is 1.8. You're still substantially below where they were told it would come in at.
Right. I just want to make sure that that number is somewhere in the ballpark as of today.
That's right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Moving on, are you going to talk handle broadband too?
Yes. The open broadband agreement, we have worked through all the details. And first of all, I want to give Bill and Ray a lot of credit for bringing this idea to the table, but I also want to give a lot of credit to Chip Crumpler.
Oh, yeah.
Chip has been really the point man on this project from day one. He's worked with the state agency. He's done all the legwork for us. He's been the contact point with this engineering company. As y'all know, we went through the process, it's a very detailed process in working with the state. In North Carolina, counties are not allowed to get into the broadband business. That's not the case in other states. But because of that, in North Carolina, it's created a problem in a lot of rural counties, rural areas, because you may not be able to make the business case for someone to come in and deploy broadband. The better technology, the cheaper technology to do this in rural areas is not fiber, because fiber's very expensive to deploy. It works more in urban areas where you have more customers per lineal mile. So the alternative is Wi-Fi broadband, which is basically, you have large towers mounted on, I mean, you have antennas mounted on large towers, like water towers. It can be a grain elevator. It can be any large or high building that you do it, and then the signal is broadcast out. So with fiber, you think... So with fiber, you think about it like a water line. Your customers have to be directly connected to it. With this, you think of it like a circle. And typically, you can cover about a four-mile radius. So it actually will cover a pretty large area mounted up on one tower. For instance, you could put one of these in Mount Olive and cover most, if not all of the town of Mount Olive with that, if there's not line of sight obstructions. And so typically, you do more than one, but it could theoretically cover that much area. So what we're looking at here, what we did, the state recommended, what they've done in other areas, is they try to do a survey of the folks and see where people are having a problem getting broadband. In some cases, people may have it, but it's dial-up, or it's very, you know, it's very slow, the bandwidth isn't very much. So you not only ask them, do you have it, but even if you have it, how satisfied are you with that? Chip then took a GIS application and basically plotted those, a dot on every one of those responses. What that gives you is a picture of where do we have clusters of people who are potential customers for a company. And then he overlaid that with all of the known water towers, cell towers, any type of tower out there that theoretically a company may be able to enter into a lease agreement with and get on that tower. And what that shows them then is, well, here's a cluster of people that would be potential customers, and here is a nearby water tower or whatever that would cover that area. So we went through all of that process, then we sent out what's called an RFI, which is a Request for Information. And we had about five or six companies respond to that. We had a meeting with them, as well as the state office of broadband came in. And from that, we ended up having one company that expressed serious interest in moving forward with this.
Actually, there was two.
Two.
But that other was just a band-aid. It just didn't work.
That's right. It would not, it would not pan out.
It wouldn't do what this does.
So what we were doing then is working with this company, Open Broadband. And they have some other projects in the state underway. I believe they're in Belmont, North Carolina. Chip, can you recall some of the others?
Pfeiffer College.
Yeah, Pfeiffer College in Misenheim.
Field.
Yeah. So they are working with other communities already on this. And so we've been working through the agreement with them. What they have proposed is a pilot program. And this pilot program, we let them select the area, because we were looking for where they thought would be the best area to start. They selected Seven Springs area. And so what this will do is we would help pay some of the cost for engineering and that sort of thing for about $39,000 on a pilot program. Now, the city has already agreed that they will participate up to $4,800, because one of the areas they want is to get free Wi-Fi into the new sports complex. And so that's basically the proposal. This is a one-time fee. We would not be doing any more assistance as they fully deploy throughout the county. But if this pilot project works to their satisfaction and your satisfaction, then we would look at going to basically full deployment over a several-year period. So that's the proposal. You have the contract before you. We've vetted it several times, and we're ready to go with it.
Some questions? Okay. I do have a question. On the pre-Wi-Fi that the city has selected, and that's the new soccer field complex, which is right behind the new school, and I'm just wondering whether or not that free Wi-Fi service would actually expand on out to that area as well?
My guess is it's going to bleed into it.
All the way to Burke Park.
All the way to Burke Park. So from my understanding, with the addition in Mount Olive, are they going to have a free Wi-Fi in Mount Olive?
I don't think it's going to be free, but what they are going to do is mount it on their water tower in the downtown area. And that water tower, if you go and look at it, it has cables coming down from it. This is what they call a point of presence on the internet. So that is hard cable coming down and tying back in ultimately into the pipes on the internet. So that's a hard connection, whereas this would be Wi-Fi. But that's what you do with these, is you do a series of antennas, and then it basically gets the signal back to that point of presence. Now, the point of presence here will be in Goldsboro.
Right. Well, you know, I would hope that Mount Olive would even look at this free Wi-Fi service as well.
Yeah.
And from my understanding, this company actually sells advertisement on the landing page for the free Wi-Fi, so they've got a revenue source. The more Wi-Fi hotspots, so to speak, in Wayne County, the better off I think we're going to be. So those people that actually cannot afford to have Wi-Fi could actually go to any of these, come downtown Goldsboro, on Center Street, you've got a free Wi-Fi.
Right.
And also these other places.
That's right. And again, the impetus for this has been primarily to get you to rural areas.
Sure, sure.
And for two reasons primarily. One, we have a lot of agribusiness and other business that is in rural areas that don't have adequate internet service. But the other big push, as y'all know, and we've talked about this with the Board of Education, the State Department of Public Instruction is moving in the direction of going to eBooks instead of paying for all these textbooks. And in doing that, then these children, most of them have devices. The Board of Education will make those available to those who cannot afford them. But what this will do then is, if these children are living in very rural areas right now, they would be at a disadvantage there, because they would have to travel somewhere and do what you're talking about, Joe, which is hit a Wi-Fi spot. Ideally, by getting this deployed countywide at a reasonable enough speed, then we would take care of that problem for all of our children.
And one last thing, and that is, I want to make sure we point out the fact that this particular service was going to have at a rate of $39, I believe.
That's correct. That's what I was just getting ready to point out.
Okay.
The affordability of this is very reasonable. And they can either cut that down by going and buying the equipment, and/or I think that 39 is part of the lease. Or is that correct as I recall?
Yeah.
But the full intention is to move this thing countywide. And I'm really glad that Mount Olive went and jumped on the bandwagon and got this started.
And in talking to the company, they want to proceed to the next phase just as quickly as usual. In other words, we, they, the contract says we have up to 12 months to determine if it's working. But if they come back in six months, they're good, you're good, we're ready to go.
Well, if they're able to find enough customers and get revenue stream, I don't think it's, I think it'll move quickly.
That's right. That's right.
We need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
Can I make a motion?
You can.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the broadband phase-two pilot program agreement as presented.
If there's a motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Well, we're on both ends. Maybe I quit getting all this phone calls. All right, we went over the consent agenda at great length earlier. Is there any questions about anything that we need to recover? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion on the floor, is any discussion? If I was the favorite, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to new business. I believe our chip coordinator, Selena Beaman, is here to talk to us this morning. If you'll come on up, the floor is yours.
Good morning. I'm Selena Beaman. I'm the new Information and Options Counselor with the Wayne County Services on Aging, housed at the Peggy Seeger Senior Center. And just here this morning to talk to y'all and make sure everybody's aware of the open enrollment with Medicare. It began October 15th and goes through December the 7th. And at the Senior Center, we are actually doing open enrollment where people can come in and sign in from 9 until 12, Monday through Wednesday, from now until December the 6th. We have, most of the time, we have five chip counselors, which are Senior Health Insurance Information Program counselors, to help assist individuals in choosing a Medicare prescription drug plan, Medicare Advantage plan. We also counsel on Medicare A and B. We can assist with supplemental plans as far as showing you what is available and assisting with making decisions and help with, the main thing we do for the most part is the prescription drug plans. That was designed to be able to look at it every year, to make changes if you need to due to the needs of individuals changing from year to year. And then we can also help with Medicare fraud and abuse. We are assigned an ID number to be able to make calls to Medicare on an individual's behalf for maybe they have a discrepancy on billing or anything like that, so we can assist with those kind of things. And then we counsel on long-term care insurance. And one of the biggest things we do is assist individuals with applications through the Social Security to apply for assistance, paying for prescription drug plans and their Medicare. So we do outreach there also to help low-income individuals in the county for assistance and things like that. So we'd love to have you direct people our way. We're also partnering with the libraries in the county to hopefully do some open enrollment sessions with them, Mount Olive here in Goldsboro, and hopefully in Fremont, and helping people in our rural areas that aren't able to get to Goldsboro. So, thank you.
I think you have a recent customer that gave some good response about it.
Yeah, I've got a very satisfied customer. In fact, Ms. Beaman was the person who counseled me, and she does an excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
We appreciate what you did for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood, we knew at some point you would need some counseling.
My wife's been saying that for years.
Okay, next, we have a presentation by Victor Hennett, North Carolina Commerce Regional Former Offender Director, Association with the Pastor Alexander. You gentlemen will come on up, and the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you so much for your time this morning. I'm Pastor Marvin Alexander. I pastor New Spirit Church Ministries here in Goldsboro. I'm also a chaplain with the Wayne County Sheriff's Department. Along with that, I'm also a TAN mentor for the Department of Public Safety. What a TAN mentor is, is someone that can go into the prison system six months out knowing that someone is coming to their county area and begin to work a process file, if you will. What do they need? Do they need housing? Do they need transportation? What skill sets have they tried to address while we're incarcerated? What accomplishments have they been able to come up with? And by understanding those elements of a person, then we can begin to put together a plan here on the outside of how to help them become more productive citizens. I work closely with Goldsboro Police Department, namely the GPAC program. We have been identified as their community resource organization. So in other words, when they do the call-in on a quarterly basis, we are that organization that comes in at the end of the presentation, and we will connect with those that they identify that have a desire, whether it's to get enrolled in school, whether it's to seek employment, whatever the case may be. Now, another thing that we do by way of not just putting a band-aid on it, is we take them through an eight-week curriculum, CBI-based, but it's also faith-based. Jobs for Life is the program we're using currently. We are also in pursuit right now of MRT certification, which would fall in line with Thinking for Change, which is used in the prison systems as well. So we will become an official facilitator in this area for MRT, moral recognition therapy. We have also been in conjunction with Mr. Victor Hennett, who will be addressing you here briefly. He is with the North Carolina Commerce. He is the Regional Former Offender Specialist. Mr. Pate, I think you will understand his position, considering your former position in the county. We have the momentum and the buy-in of several entities within our area. We presented before the City Council here recently, and we were very pleased with the response we received from the City Council as well. I had the privilege, through Ms. Carol, to attend your Stepping Up Initiative meeting here recently. And we do see how our efforts would be a strong collaboration with what she is trying to address through the Stepping Up Initiative. In the short period of time that we have been here, we were officially made a 501(c)(3) in 2015. But in the short time that we've actually had our physical office here in Goldsboro, which is roughly nine months, we have been successful with getting 13 former offenders employed. We have been successful with getting a complete family housed within the local community. We've also been successful with a very hard task of getting a sex offender placed in housing. And that, you know, is something that can be quite daunting at times. We are also in collaboration with Wayne Community College, and we have been successful with getting four actively enrolled into Wayne Community College, and they are active students at this time. We work closely with NC Works and with the WIIOA program, and we have been active in getting people signed up for that as well. There are a lot of things that we can do by way of collaboration, and we're here today to kind of make you aware of who we are and what we are doing and what our efforts are moving forward. When you look at the rate or the cost to incarcerate someone for one year, it is roughly $34,000. If we're able to keep 12 people from recidivating back into prison for one year, that saves our state $408,000. Now, let's flip that another way. How much tax money would that generate for our community if we're able to get them gainfully employed and make them productive citizens? So we want to come today, and we thank you for your time. Mr. Hennett is going to address you at this time. He will identify the piece where we're working on the reentry council. This is a state movement as well. There are several counties that are already up and running with reentry council. And Wayne County is very much on that cusp of being ready to get state certification as far as being moving forward with a state recognition for a reentry council. At this time, I'm going to give you Mr. Victor Hennett.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Again, my name is Victor Hennett. He stole all my thunder, so he used the statistics. I hope you remember the statistics he brought for you. In 2016, Wayne County received 256 people from prison, and over 1,400 under supervision. My relationship with Wayne County specifically is that I go on a quarterly basis down to the David Reporting Center and do job seminars and that kind of thing. But I'm also in about nine to 10 prisons in this region. I cover about 29 counties. And part of my job responsibility is helping the communities organize around reentry. Now, as you mentioned, one of the reasons that we, one of the major reasons we're doing this is for public safety, primarily public safety. But it's also a cost-effective way of dealing with this issue that doesn't cause the taxpayers as much money as incarceration has historically proven. As a result of that, this is a bipartisan movement. This is not a one-sided movement or the other. You know, it's cost-effective, but it also affects families as well. I've been approached personally by representatives of everybody, from Congressman Butterfield to Senator Tillis, who are all passionate about providing services. North Carolina is one of the few states that has a statewide reentry movement. There are other states that have local reentry movements per city, but we have a statewide reentry movement. Right now, Governor Cooper is invested in this and has basically taken the reins of reentry since he's been in office, although this initiative has started ever since 2007. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that there are resources for those individuals returning from home who want to try to choose another way in order to have an opportunity for jobs, housing, transportation, food, shelter, and the like. What I do is I go into the communities and determine what is the most primary barrier to employment. Employers are now on board with this. We just have to have a way of vetting these individuals so the employers will, the risk of hiring these folks will be as minimal as we possibly can give them in terms of vetting their mental capacity, vetting their skill set, and that kind of thing. So what I'm here before you is to talk to you about, you know, what we've already done. We've been involved in reentry since, well, I've been in this community since 2011, in and out, trying to start a reentry initiative. trying to start a reentry initiative. We finally got some sticking and staying power with Pastor Alexander and some other individuals that are dedicated to this issue. We meet on a monthly basis, and, but we're also a part of the reentry councils throughout the statewide. Right now, we're going to have a meeting in Winston-Salem of all reentry councils that have already been established, about fifteen funded reentry councils. We started out with five pilot projects, which I was a part of two of those pilot projects personally. But this is my thing for being in front of you. Although there is funding with the government's Crime Commission, and although there is funding with the United States Department of Labor and Department of Justice, those are grants to see these projects for education, support, and understanding. But in order for this movement, in order for this project to be able to sustain itself, there has to be local investment as well. And what I'm imploring you to do is to try to find or identify agencies, such as Pastor Alexander's agency and other agencies throughout this state have proven to have great relationships with the county, with the law enforcement, with the local government and judiciary. What we need is a credible program to vet these individuals so that they can be reintegrated into the community safely and successfully. And this is why we're here meeting. We've been meeting since, how many months have we been meeting? Since January. And we continue, if you have monthly or bi-weekly meetings, to discuss what resources and how we can approach this issue. And it's been successful. And in case you want to know, you know, and you want to do your homework, you can check with Becklinburg County, Asheville, Greenville, North Carolina, Wilson Nash Edgecombe has theirs, Hope Robinson Scott has theirs. Those are the five pilot projects. And we're now expanding to Greensboro, Raleigh, Wayne, Carteret, Craven, Anzlo, of which Anzlo and Craven have been announced as a funded reentry council and acknowledged by the Department of Public Safety. For statistical support and understanding, you need to contact the the North Carolina Department of Safety, Public Safety Transition Office. I have all these acronyms in my head. So, in other words, what we're here to do is to announce to you that we're asking that you know that, well, we're letting you know that we're here and we're trying to provide a grassroots effort to deal with this recidivism issue, and that we've already developed relationships with nonprofit organizations and local organizations, and we've informed the judiciary that we exist. We're informing you. And we would like for your investment as well, and understanding that when we come before you, we're not coming out of left field asking for something that has no foundation, no organization. We are organized, we do have foundation, and we do have credible support from the state level. And pretty much, that's all I have to tell you. Being a part of this, I'm very passionate. I'm looking at Mr. Pate. He knows that most state employees have to be shut up. So, you need to do like that, like all my managers do. But I'm very passionate about this, and I do believe in Pastor Alexander's efforts and the efforts of your citizens to keep this movement going. So, thank you for your time. Hopefully, you'll be willing to listen to us at other times when we have projects we want to present to you.
Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hennett. So, I understand you are a state employee.
That's correct.
Directed to go out and facilitate the opportunity for people to move back into the community, job-wise, housing-wise, whatever these are. And how did you, what organized, what method, a mechanism causes you to associate with Pastor Alexander? Because if I understand it right, you are a local, Pastor Alexander, you are a local nonprofit.
Yes, sir, I am.
Opportunity.
Yeah, I have twenty-nine counties that I go into. My job is basically going in and finding credible agencies to develop support, to find out what resources. One of the biggest issues about reentry, and one of the biggest issues about recidivism is the lack of communication between agencies. All these agencies deal with these people in different capacities, DSS.
Let me ask the follow-up. I have a follow-up. I'm like you, like, keep it like this for long and slide away. Mr. Wood, when nonprofits come before us annually, looking for different funding for different activities that they describe as, I think, pretty much what I hear you all saying, what, what opportunities would some of those organizations have? And I'm not picking anyone or excluding anyone to work with Mr. Hennett since he's a state agency. What opportunity would, and I ask you this question. How many of these local nonprofit help organizations are included in what you're doing?
Well, the reentry council invites all comers. It is an open door.
But how many, how many now?
How many right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, for example, in Greenville, North Carolina, we have.
The Wayne County.
In Wayne County.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Wayne County, we currently have a partnership with Salvation Army, Wayne Community College.
Well, no, no, I mean, okay, I don't want to, I'm talking about agencies that's exactly like you. Not Wayne Community. I'm talking about not Salvation Army. I'm talking about.
Well, what we do is.
But just a minute, I don't ask Mr. Wood a question, because I'm trying to get to.
Okay.
Annually, there are groups come, nonprofits, who are looking for some assistance. I mean, to do different things. What I'm trying to determine is, whenever our county manager hear from some of those agencies doing budget session, how would they access, I mean, how would the relationship be productive for those? Because I'm using Pastor Alexander as an example. If I believe they might mirror some of what you're doing, how would they be successful? Because, you know, once this is written in the newspaper, it'll look like we're getting ready to do something or not do something. I'm trying to.
Okay, so, there is a vetting process. That's the purpose of the reentry council, is to vet those agencies. Now, the criteria, and we go by the criteria and the functioning of reentry council as set by the state. Okay, so, everybody that wants to be a part of this has to go through that vetting process. Every agency, there's, if the state provides seed money, for example, every agency that feels that they meet that criteria can bid on that. They don't exclusively go to one particular agency and say, "We're going to give you this money. You gotta, it has to be bidded on." But as a result of that, what we've, what we've done in the Department of Commerce and the Department of Public Safety is we've learned to go into the communities before that money is seeded to vet all agencies, to determine who's been in the game, who's been dealing with former offenders, who will be dealing with former offenders even if we don't do anything financially for them. Okay? And that's how we work on it. Because every time we decide to get together, yes, a lot of people come to the table and tell them, tell the story of their agency and what they intend to do. But we need to know, one, that they're sustainable. Two, that if we do, if the state does provide seed money, that that money is not there for one year and one year only. That they're figuring out a way to sustain themselves through other grant sources and other funding sources. So, we have a formula, that we train these individuals how to raise money. We have a formula of how to talk to the community and ask the community and county commissioners to invest in this program. And it's a process, and this is one of the first stages of the process. We are here, is basically what we're saying. And this is what we're up to. So, anytime we talk about reentry, you'll hear MPI, you'll hear the North Carolina Reentry Council is doing a project, and we want your support. You will also be, you also have the way of vetting what we're doing through the state, because the state also has a process to confirm us. They have what they call affiliated, and we have funded. The affiliated sometimes are not funded, but they are, they are recognized by the state as going by the principles of the state's organizational structure. The funded are the ones that they provided seed money to, the supporting agency, and the fiscal agent, to support the reentry council's efforts to reduce recidivism in that community. So, so now, as we, as we come into any community, we want both the City Council, but the county commissioners, and everyone to know that we exist and what we're up to. When we do fundraisers, when we do things like that, when the, and what I mean by we is the reentry councils do fundraisers. As a state employee, my job is to get the folks organized and then get out the way and let them determine what their community needs, but to give them the structure, the bylaws, the connections to the state, and the, and to identify funding sources they can tap into. But my, also, my other responsibility is to make sure that the agencies that are involved in this reentry councils are credible, that they're just not coming in because somebody says there's a pot of money waiting to be invested in.
So, in Wayne County, how many entities are in this reentry council? How many groups?
Okay, Wayne County, well, the list goes on. But those who state mandate has to be in it, has to be, when we say nonprofit, any nonprofit. Any nonprofit you can imagine can be a part of it. But also, what's mandated is the Sheriff's Department, the Department of Public Safety, Department of Corrections, the judiciary, the county, the school board, the Board of Education, and any other agency that provides services, such as DSS, and those folks. Those, there's a whole list, and I apologize because we didn't bring you the organizational structure today, but we can't have that in your possession.
Well, and that's what, I think that's what I'm trying to find, is, is my ear picked it up. Most agencies you mentioned just now are governmental-funded agencies in some fashion. And what I was looking for was the list of nonprofits or help agencies or that, members who are that group that you just mentioned, who would have access to your leadership guidance and your state arm, if you will. Because we were certainly, and have had different groups come to this board over the years to look for funding that would help to do, I think, some of the kind of things that I hear you describing. And I always, I always, Mr. Hennett, I've always wondered, where was the state dollars coming? And who would bring them? And how would it help the groups here in Wayne County? So, I.
Okay, so, right now, the gatekeeper is the Department of Public Safety.
Okay.
And of funding. And they, and the Office of Transition Services is the vetting agency for the state. We are, the Department of Commerce was the first funders of this effort in 2011. And we've been in collaboration, and we have a memorandum of agreement to assist all of the transition services folks. The step that we go through is identify ourselves to the community and let them know what we're up to, meet on a regular basis in key minutes, and then we determine what projects are necessary to increase or decrease recidivism, increase recidivism in this community. So, when it comes to nonprofit agencies, there's no one excluded from this process. Everyone is invited to the table, and they contribute what they can. In fact, it's important that they come to the table. And we also include employers in that as well. The reason we do this is because when everybody comes to the table, then we can maximize resources. Okay, so that we can, it's where it can be cost-effective. But when we come before boards like yourself, what we're doing is we're saying to you that once the state gives us their blessing and determine that we're a viable, a sustainable reentry council, the only way that we're going to be able to keep this process working is to have the community also invest. And that investment, it doesn't always mean money, gentlemen. It does mean, you know, support. It means your endorsement. It means your participation. It means your advice. Okay, we would, we would approach any one of you as an advisor to this council to determine that we're going through this process in the right way, according to your community standards. And so, the best way I can put it to you is that, right now, we have about twenty-two of the twenty-nine counties that I'm responsible, meeting on a regular basis around reentry. And statewide, they intend to have, well, the law, there's a reentry law that requires a reentry council to cover every county, every, all one hundred counties. This law was authored by Tom Tillis and a couple of other senators. And I always had, I always have the senators, several senators and state senators and state representatives involved in this effort as well. So, we're educating right now and letting you know that Pastor Alexander exists, that other agencies exist. But when I've been in and out of this community, we've, I've always had people identify the problem. This is what we call the solution.
Ed, I think to answer your question a little bit further is, it would seem to me that anyone, any nonprofit who has an interest in looking at a reentry program, particularly if they're looking for county assistance, you know, at budget time, the time for them to get involved is now. And I would recommend they get involved with his reentry council. Because what we're going to look at from our office is, we want, you know, we're going to be asking, who has, who do you see as viable, sustainable, and not just a one-time shot? And, and that has been actively involved with this reentry council. Because that, what we're looking for is, what he's looking for is, if we're going to, if we're going to do anything, we want to know it's going to be sustainable. And we want to know that it's, it's moving in the same direction that the state is wanting to take this program. So, does that answer your?
Mr. Wood, thank you very much. I, and.
I'm glad he said that.
Without giving you a thousand questions, I was running for the opportunity for Mr. Wood to share just what he's shared with you. Because in just a few months, groups will begin to send paperwork to him requesting some of the kind of things that you all are talking about right now. My colleague right here and I are heavy on the side of skill. That's our background. I mean, and so apprenticeship skills, retraining people to be successful. I taught skills in high school and all that, bottom repair by trade. So, you know, I'm not, and so my, my interest goes to real opportunities for people to get skills they may not have ever had. People coming back to keep from having to go back to where they were in bad trouble coming from. You know what I'm saying? But it has a relationship, it has a, has to be a structured opportunity for those people to have access to any help coming from us.
And I think that's what Mr. Hennett is bringing to the table.
But it has to come through a structured way, with everyone having an equal opportunity.
And see, and I guess to close, I want to say this, that my goal has always been sustainability. So, you know, administrations come and go from the federal level and the state level. But in order for this movement to have sustainability, we can't wait for political will or movement. We have to have a characteristic within that community that says, no matter what, we're going to work on this effort in our own community in the best way we can. And I'm not here advocating that you, you know, open up your wallets and throw this out. What I'm advocating for you is you support us in our efforts to provide you a sustainable agency with credibility and strength and dedication to continue the service. You know, I give an example, Strive International in Greenville started their efforts way before this was fashionable. And they always had funding, and they always had a relationship with the police department, and they've always had standards. And now, when the state came in there, it was just logical for them to invest in that agency because they already had the credible, sustainable goals. Now, they're, now they're, Strive International is bringing more money to this effort than they've ever done before. And so, Greenville benefited from that. Why? Because this agency and this, the lady that started it, Ms. Jones, was always in this. She, and it was always, and it was under circumstances. People were looking for jobs, but they were just, they had criminal records. So, she figured out a way to work with everybody, including in businesses and industries. We need to bring that kind of effort into Wayne County so that you can have an opportunity to get some of these people off the streets and employed, and have a way of vetting them and supporting them throughout their efforts to be successful.
Not to prolong this, but, you know, I did exactly what you were doing in 1985 and 1986. Shows how old I am. The way we were funded, and this again shows how old I am, was through JTPA dollars through the workforce boards. Are you receiving any dollars from them?
The workforce boards?
It's Carolina Workforce Board. Seems to me, you know, their allowance was the training dollars, and they've got the money. That might be the best.
What we've been doing is we've been accessing the WIIOA funds for youth, and most of the youth.
Well, it's coming from the workforce board.
So, that's how we maximize our income, because there is money coming for educational and job training opportunities through these agencies. So, we bring all of that to the table so that we can make sure that we're not pulling for one too much.
So, are you funded that way, your salary coming from?
Yeah.
The WIA funds? I thought so.
My salary comes from WAG supplies, yes and no. So, you keep, keep voting for the right people.
Well, he's got a difficult job, folks, I know him. Are you also an educator at DOC? So, they allow you to see all the records and everything?
Yeah, they allow me into all the prisons to talk to all the folks. They allow me, now, I don't get a chance to talk, I talk to the probation officers. I'm basically the middleman for everybody, you know, in terms of trying to get people jobs.
You interview the inmates?
I go, I go to every prison in this region. Noose, before they had that barbecue, I used to go in there. And I still go, I still be, will be going in there. I go into Eastern, Green, Maury, uh, Carteret, Pampico, Pasquetan. Uh, I go into Nash and Tillery and Caledonia, and I do classes in all of those. And I even go in there one-on-one when families request that I meet some of their relatives who are about to get out. Uh, my real goal is to get them transitioned out. Now, we are, we are developing programs that are going into the pro, we are developing programs to have people like Pastor Aiko into the prisons and provide the same services as they transition out. Uh, so that when they come back to Wayne County, they may even have a job.
This, this is what's caught my attention, uh, the NC Works. At being, being an advocate, as most of the board knows, of the, uh, training and apprenticeship program for the last thirty-nine years. I'm part of NC Works and I'm on the NC Works Commission, uh, over in Raleigh. And what we, what, what you're talking about here is, is an avenue that the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program, we are involved in the prisons. What we need to do is to try to train these people before they are released. And, and the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program, my, the, the last count, uh, statewide, the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program, uh, is, has about twenty-five hundred inmates that the apprenticeship program is actually going in to the prisons. So I think that's, that's where we need to, to take it up if we can. Now, having reentry, I'm in the manufacturing sector and there's a critical shortage of machinists, welders, you name it. And this is a good, this is a good place for reentry, to, to get good employees. And I'm sa, I'm not saying, I'm saying this from experience. I have in my own company, the people that have a record. And I can tell you that selectively, if people are given an opportunity, they can be a productive citizen and provide their own way. And, and so we need to take a look, especially on the manufacturing side, the skills that are coming from people that's coming out of prisons on reentry. I'm pleased that I'm part of the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program that's in the prisons, that we are trying to train prisoners before they ever were released inmates. And we need to get these people back in society in a productive way. So thank you for what you do.
Mr. Wood, pardon me, I have one short question I need to ask Pastor Alexander. I'm, I'm not.
No, you're fine, you're fine, sir.
I'm sorry. In, in developing reentry opportunities, what's, what skills are, are, are you preparing these folk? What are you doing with the folk who you're trying to prevent the reentry into the bad situation? What are you training them for?
Good question, good question. We're using the CBI format, where we're using the, the cognitive behavioral therapy intervention, that we're actually going through the process of helping them to understand. Uh, some of the choices you may have made may not have been the choices you should have made. And let's look at this from a different concept, that what could you do differently? We're providing them with money management training. Uh, we're connected again with NC Works and with WIWA. So we're taking them through the trade programs and things of that nature. By being able to go into the prison myself, I have access to their file.
So you're talking about soft skills?
Soft skills and, and actual performance skills by way of welding, HVAC, whatever the case it may be.
What, either sitting up through Wayne County or college?
Yes, sir, that, that's our primary portal. But we do, since I'm able to go in ahead of time, I can assess, do you still have time to take this class? Or to pursue this, this area of training? And we can get it taken care of while they're still on the inside, not waiting till they come from the outs, on the outside.
Also, also we found that individuals who come out, sometimes they're successful for a short period of time, but they don't have anyone to go to when things get weak. They don't know who to go to. So we're providing agencies like this, even though they go in from the beginning, this is a sustainable agency that they can always go through, no matter how many years they've been out, if they feel as though certain things are pulling at them to go and make the bad decisions. You know, that sometimes it's not mental, not, sometimes it's not drugs, sometimes it's just issues that, that concern them. There has to be an agency to deal with every go, these are global people, they have to be able to deal with it. And another thing you were saying about the apprentice program, you know, most, one of the little-known facts about, uh, North Carolina is they have thirty-two factories to provide hard skills for these individuals. For everything from printing to making eyeglasses, to, uh, metal fabrication, as you were mentioning. Uh, they also work on the roads, uh, and they also do things like carpentry. I wouldn't be surprised if some of this furniture in here were, were, uh, was created by some of the former vendors out of the Creation and Price Program. So that's what we do.
Mr. Chairman, could I have just one bit of information about the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program? In case you're not aware, the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program is switching from the Department of Commerce to the community colleges. It's already in process, uh, it's, it's already, for all intents and purposes, moved to the community college system. So keep in mind, the North Carolina Apprenticeship Program now can be, uh, could be entertained and, and acquired through the community colleges throughout North Carolina. Okay?
Thanks, sir. Last note, you will also be receiving an invitation to our next reentry roundtable meeting on November seventeenth.
Seems like you schedule that thing most of the time when we're meeting or something.
Okay, so we'll make sure we get that.
Tuesdays are always a bad day for us. Tuesdays are a bad day for us.
Well, here's what we do, if you're not able to make it, we can at least send you the minutes. So that way you're able to, to, to travel along this journey with us.
Cause then Derek sends me the, the information that usually we're always either, we're either having our meeting and/or we've got a, a agenda meeting. Tuesdays are just bad days for this.
Yes, sir. And this is November fourteenth, where?
Wayne Community College, Walla Billings, Room One-O-One, it's gonna be from five-thirty until seven.
No, five-thirty until Sunday evening. We won't be making that late, I hope.
And closing, one last nugget. We currently have one thousand five hundred and twenty-seven people serving on supervised probation in Wayne County. We're averaging roughly between five to ten people coming out each month coming to Wayne County. Uh, I'm privileged to say that we're working closely and in discussions right now with District Eight probation and parole and looking at a true partnership, that we will be that entity that will assist their people through the process. We're doing it now, uh, by way of the GPAC collaboration. But as of the last month, uh, probation parole has had me on speed dial. Uh, we've got this person that, that needs a house, we've got this person that, that needs a job. So, uh, we are actively working and I want, I want the, the board to understand this. To me, this is something that benefits us all. So I'm gonna do it whether or not there's certain amounts of funding that comes our way. I will make every effort to make a difference in Wayne County.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for your time.
Okay. All right, let's see here. Talk about the resolution to provide inspection, uh, for the town about all of, upon their request.
We went over that, uh, at the eight o'clock meeting. Does anybody have any questions on that?
A motion to approve that, Mr. Wood.
Now, there's a motion on, on the floors, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Moving on to the next one was adopting a resolution naming a bridge in honor of Dr. John L. Hart, Tar, excuse me. And, uh, we talked about that earlier and I think you were gonna take care of that.
First, I'd like to thank the Tart family for being here this morning and thank you for your patience. So if you allow me to read the resolution. Resolution number two oh one eight dash twenty-eight for Dr. John L. Tart. So whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one thirty-six dash eighteen A, North Carolina Board of Transportation may name roads, bridges, or ferries. And whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners desire to honor former member of North Carolina House Representatives, former Wayne County Commissioner and dedicated public servant, Dr. John L. Tart. And whereas Dr. John L. Tart focused on education, most specifically the community college system, served for twenty-nine years as president of Johnson Community College and eight years on North Carolina State Board of Education. And whereas Dr. John L. Tart received many honors for his hard work and service to his community, most notably the Order of Longleaf Pine and the Lifetime Achievement Award by the North Carolina State Future Formers of America Foundation. And whereas Dr. John L. Tart dedicated his life to his family, SEAL a Christian church, civic organizations, numerous boards, and many colleges which touch the lives of the people, communities in North Carolina, especially eastern North Carolina. And whereas the family of Dr. John L. Tart supports the request of Wayne County Board of Commissioners to name the bridge located on Highway Thirteen South in Wayne County between Hood Drive and Overmore Road, crossing Thirrefire Swamp in his honor. And whereas Wayne County Board of Commissioner understands North Carolina Board of Transportation criteria to have a road, bridge, or ferry named in honor of an individual, that individual must be living or be deceased for a year or longer. Therefore, it be resolved that Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby request North Carolina Board of Transportation to name the bridge located on Highway Thirteen South in Wayne County between Hood Drive and Overmore Road, crossing Thirrefire Swamp for the late Dr. John L. Tart, adopted this September day of November two thousand seventeen, to be signed by Chairman William H. Pate. And, Mr. Chairman, I put this in the, I form motion to adopt resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-eight.
We have a motion on the floors, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to take a point of privilege and speak to my good friend, John, back there. Didn't recognize he lost so much weight. We used to be coworkers in probation and parole.
Next, we have a, uh, funds, I get right a minute, fire service funding agreement with, um, Princeton Volunteer Fire Department. We talked about this earlier.
Right, this is our standard agreement.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Got a motion on the floor, is any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Number six is the same thing, but it's with the town of Madrange.
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, is any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, thank you. Ms. Pate, you're, this is, uh, her quarterly financial statement for the county of Wayne for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen through September third.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will talk about the county financial statements first, and this is through the quarter of September thirtieth, so represents twenty-five percent of our fiscal year. And you all received a few handouts, I believe, or are receiving a few handouts. You should have a summary of substantial items from the financial report, a sales tax chart that's giving you an update on where we are with sales taxes, and then the actual financial report itself. So I'll start with the actual financial report itself. If you look at comparatively our cash, um, it shouldn't be any surprise that our cash has increased significantly since September of last year. Most of this is represented by the bond proceeds that we've received. We did have some major cash outflows such as the loans to the city of Goldsboro for the sports complex, but, um, mostly inflows right now. Um, and I do want to point out that our interest is continuing to increase and this is a positive thing for us. Um, we are doing some investing, but also the interest rate environment has, uh, gone up and even our safer, um, accounts like the Cash Management Trust, the interest rate has improved. So this is a great thing for us. Revenues over expenditures, right now at September thirtieth, you will see that expenditures actually exceeded revenues. And if you look at the summary sheet I gave you, I've given you a breakdown of what represents the expenditures over revenues right now. That's not incredibly unusual for this time of year. If you look at September of last year, it was the same thing, actually more than what it is at this time. But the biggest part of that is we have made some debt payments related to schools and just haven't received the, um, funding for that yet, such as lottery proceeds, all the sales tax monies and the federal reimbursement. And then, of course, our property taxes, they don't typically start coming in really good until around Christmas time. So we'll see those revenues, uh, go up over the next few months. The next thing I want to point out is just the difference between September sixteen and September of seventeen and what those, um, what those differences are. Expenditures over revenues were at twelve, twelve and a half million last year and are at seven and a half million this year. And I'd just like to, to show you some of these things because it represents more of the significant inflows and outflows over the last year. The biggest being that last year at this time, we did have some large capital project transfers, such as the nine-one-one center and the fiber optic, the fiber loop. So that is why you've seen, that's why we had such a, a difference that, um, expenditures over revenues last year compared to this year. I'm gonna move down to the property taxes and as I said before, um, we have not received, uh, we're twenty-five percent of the year, but generally speaking, we don't receive twenty-five percent of the property taxes at this time. However, we are still in good shape. And if you look at number three on your summary page, at this time, um, last year, we had not collected as much in total on property taxes. So we've exceeded collections already by about four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. Sales taxes are at September thirty, which is what your report is based on, on, is about twenty-five percent. So we're right on track with what we budgeted. And just a little bit down from last year, not by much. If you look at the bottom of the first page of your report, it shows you a negative thirty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-four dollars. And that is just the difference between September of this year and September of last year and what we had collected in sales tax. So at September, we were down a little bit. However, I have good news for you, in October, we were back up. So, and if you look at your sales tax chart that I've included, you will see that October was an improvement. And so if I, if I fast forward to the October distribution, we're actually ahead of where we were last year. So it's a little bit inconsistent month to month, but generally speaking, right now, we are still ahead. Do you all have any questions about that part or about the chart? Okay, then I'm gonna move on to selected expenditures. And I'm not gonna read all these to you unless you just have some specific questions, but I will point out a, a couple. You will notice that public assist, I'm sorry, public help, um, the revenues have increased quite a bit. They've received their Medicaid cost settlement already this year, which was earlier than this time last year. And just to kinda give you a quick update, because usually Ken and David are really good at keeping us, um, up to date on the audit that's going on. They have, um, au, they have given us this fifteen, sixteen dispersment, which was the seven hundred thousand that we've received already this year. But they're still retaining the ten percent and will still do the desk audit. And they've not done anything with the sixteen, seventeen audit yet. Um, and then if you recall, last year, we received a whole harmless payment because they changed the calculation on how this is all formulated. And so they are still waiting to hear what the final payback will be. But that whole harmless is supposed to help offset whatever our payback will be. So that's just to give you a little bit of an update on the health department. And then unless you have any other questions, I will jump down to, um, workers' comp and hospitalization. And those are on the third page of your financial report. And we just had a meeting with Mark Three. We do a quarterly update and they just basically confirmed what we're seeing in the financials. And that is that hospitalization is, is kinda holding its own right now. So that's a good thing. I know we're only three months into the year, but we'll take it every month we can get it if it's a good, a good trend. And workers' comp is about the same. So, um, right now, both of those funds are doing pretty well. The final page of the financial report, I just listed the selected capital projects. That should be page four of your financial report. And that's just giving you kind of a quick summary of where we are budgeted versus actual, um, and this is actual life to date. So some of these, we've spent some in the prior years too. But it just kinda gives you a quick overview on these big capital projects that you, that you've been talking about and working on and where we are with the expenditures. And I just, just to give you an update, um, our audit for sixteen, seventeen is going really well. We've, um, we've actually, um, worked with the auditors to complete a lot of the field work and work papers. We're on track to be done earlier this year, so we're really excited about that. So, uh, hopefully you will, you will be hearing from that shortly. Are there any questions about this financial report?
Questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just had a, a question going back on, uh, the expenditures and so forth for the jet port.
Yes, sir.
Is, is the jet port overall, uh, maintaining its own amount, is it's pretty well?
Yes, they're doing pretty well. And, and you will see that we've actually, their revenues and expenditures are probably up right now, but we've got, you've, there's a lot of projects going in there. So we've got the, um, FAA monies coming in and the state monies coming in. So those are the projects that you all have been planning on and working on. So those are kind of coming to fruition, so you're seeing some of those monies.
And that's why the expenditures are up?
Right.
Because we are doing some of those.
Yes, the, my, the point is, is that that's been the goal ever since I've been a commissioner. And so we're, we're getting there and the potential of that jet port is just unbelievable over the last six months to a year. So thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Can you give us a little bit more explanation on how we were able?
Can you give us a little bit more explanation on how we were able to, and I hope it's through your great management skills, how were we able to finally take our interest income and dramatically increase it?
Well, we've been working on our investment program, so that, we, because the interest rates were so low for a long period of time, it didn't make a lot of sense for us to venture out, so to speak. We, we've always had the cash management, the term, and the government fund, but over the past few years, we've been investing more, mostly short-term, but commercial paper-type investments. And so we've been working with a broker, and they've been helping us select, you know...
But we've just started those processes, is that correct? I mean, that's a tremendous increase, about a three-hundred percent increase on revenue. I mean, we're sitting here with, with savings in the bank, and we're hardly getting, I think, a quarter of a percent interest on it. I sometimes wonder whether or not we have to pay the bank to have them, for them to keep the money.
It is getting better now, as you said, but it's still, the environment's terrible.
I mean, that's a dramatic increase.
And it's, it's, I mean, every time, I, I get periodic updates on what the rates are and things like that, and as you recall, Mr. Wood has mentioned that we're working on the investment policy. And so hopefully, we will, and, and part of my plan in that is to start bringing you more information about our investment program. It's kind of small right now, it's really just left up to me, so it's kind of, you know, I, I try to keep it going as much as possible so that we always have something invested, but, but, I mean, it is, it's, it's mostly because the interest rates have increased and, and we've been able to take advantage of that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, moving on.
All right, so the next item is the Tourism Development Authority financials. I believe you just have a couple of pages on that. Again, we're only three months into the year, so not a lot of new news to tell, other than we are pretty much tracking well with what's been budgeted for our revenues. If you look to the far right, it says we're about eighteen point seven percent total in revenues, and I will say that this, keep in mind, the Tourism Authority is always a month behind, so this actually represents, I say it's through September thirtieth, it only represents two months because of the, because of the way the taxes run through this. So we are tracking pretty well with that. Expenditures are pretty much on track with what we had planned so far, and they have, we have completed the audit, and that was presented, I believe it was the meeting before last. And just to give you kind of a quick, quick synopsis on that, it was, it was a good, clean audit opinion. Fund balance, we have for the town of Mount Olive committed at June thirty twenty seventeen, twenty thousand three hundred and sixty, and I do let them know monthly what their total balance is, so that when they do get ready to draw those monies down, that they, they have that available to them. And then, we, we developed a working fund balance policy in the Tourism Authority this past year, was that the recommendation of our auditor? So our working fund balance policy is eighteen thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, and then we have to have our stabilization by state statute. And then beyond that, the remaining fund balance was at forty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-three. So we feel very good about that because it's only been in operations about, what, almost two years now?
Yeah, yeah. This has gone very well, and on the forty-one thousand, we're gonna do a, an amendment to the budget at this coming meeting. James Wade has worked with Ashlyn Glather because she did the budget, you know, he wasn't on board at that point. And quite a bit of that is gonna be going to help with the marketing for opening up the Maxwell Center. So they agree to this marketing budget every year, they've come to an agreement on that, and that will be on that agenda. And I think that means next week.
Thursday, Thursday this week.
This week. So I want to let you know that forty-one thousand will not be sitting there, it will be used for marketing, and we, we felt like what better time to use it than the next few months as we're opening up the Maxwell Center.
The question, the oil line booking companies, that twelve hundred ninety-one negative, is that because they just had to pay their bills, is that what that is?
No, and thank you for pointing that out. That is, that is showing that way because of the accruals that we had to record for the adjusting entries with the audit, and so that will correct itself as we receive more in throughout the month. So that, that really had to do with an accrual. It had, and that one is the only way, the only one that happened with, and I need to look at it in more detail because I want to make sure that we, we just recorded the July accrual, but we'll double check that, but that is, that's what I'm thinking it, it probably is, I saw that a while ago.
Yeah, I saw a puzzle looker in your face about it. Let me, let me explain that. If you, if you do these on a, on cash basis, then the months match up, but in governmental accounting, some of the, this is a, an enterprise fund, so it's, it's full accrual.
Right.
And so she has to go in at year end and convert that modified accrual to full accrual. And so what happens is, is some of this money she got in July on a cash basis really had to be accrued back as a revenue for June, and that's why in July, it would show as a negative number.
That's also why we only have two months' worth of data in here, because of the accruals and the fact that, the way the taxes flow, one month behind.
Well, you just hate to see a financial statement where you're in the negative.
It's, it's temporary.
The only reason I ask is because, yeah, one time we weren't collecting these dollars, and now we are.
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
I, I do want to make one comment. This Wayne County Tourism Development Authority, I think is working very well. You know, we, we had a few glitches with it because initially, as y'all know, we were just gonna raise Goldsboro's tax rate by one penny on the occupancy tax, and we were gonna basically use, use their committee. Well, when we had to switch it to our own, the statute required that we had to have our own Tourism Development Board by state statute. But we've been able to match up the terms of the members and the names of the members for the most part, and the, the board functions, the two boards function extremely well. Bill and I, and Craig, and Allison go to the meetings, I think they've worked extremely well together.
Yeah, it is too. Okay, we talked about this earlier too, about the hundred fifty thousand dollars for the funds for the...
Yeah, I just wanted to make y'all aware of this. We get this every year, and we're able to use it at the airport for whatever capital project we want to use it for. So sometimes we just save that money up until we have a capital project where we have a ten percent match. But I wanted to make y'all aware, we did get it again this year, so it's a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we would have to match sixteen thousand six hundred and sixty-seven, which is not a problem, because that would be a roughly ten percent match, which we do want all of those ninety-ten projects. And if y'all recall, we still have some of those eastern region funds that you guys earmarked for the airport, and they still show on their balance sheet and everything, so that's what we're using as a ten percent match on all these grant programs until that runs out.
Okay, thank you. One other thing that we didn't get on the agenda because I thought we had too much, and Carol asked, it's okay if she shows the video, if you can tell us what it is.
Uh, it's the, the monthly video that Public Relations...
Oh, okay.
...puts together for what you guys have accomplished the previous month.
Well, by all means, don't y'all want to see that? You get it working, then. I did have one comment, I was really disappointed that, with the fine team that we put on the course, that we didn't bring home a, you know, first place win, or at least, at least third place.
I think Andrew's shoulders wore out.
Yeah, I figured he was shoulder and all, all responsibility.
Oh, yeah, I guarantee. Although I will say, Carol sunk a thirty, thirty-five foot putt for a birdie.
Woo! It's a once in a lifetime, I can assure you.
Sorry to say, I bet you can't do it again.
Nope.
All right, county managers' comments?
Uh, I, in the interest of time, I'm gonna skip that.
Okay.
Because we've got quite a few things to go over and close that.
Anyway, no, all right, well, I'll go right to the commissioners' end, since we've got a lot, so if you, so what you gotta say? Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just to be brief, we've already discussed, we had a jet port advisory board meeting, and of course, that, we just talked about the jet port. Also had our first DSS meeting with, with our new director, and that's all really going well. Tammy Schrankler's doing a, she, she stepped out running, and she's got a lot going on, a lot of good things are happening, and so that's going well. Attended the, attended the Leadership Wayne meeting at Lane Tree, and also we attended the John Carr road naming presentation, which was, which was very touching, but very, very deserving. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Comerly.
Yes, sir, since we met last, I attended the Board of Health meeting, and also I attended the Gold Wayne Transportation meeting with Fred and others over here in the City Hall building. I would like to offer one light, a bit of humor, it wasn't funny to me at the time, but in the elevator, you have to have a badge for it to go up and down from first to second or third floor, whatever's over there. The young lady in the past, that takes me to the elevator, puts my badge in it, hitting the number two, and I go on up. Well, the last time, she hit number two, turned and left, and the elevator didn't move. So I'm sitting, standing there for a moment, I said, I'm not moving. Then I realized I wasn't moving, but sure enough, I called my good colleague...
He called me.
My rescue man, at his phone number, he was in the meeting already, and so they sent someone to get me out of the elevator.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, City Hall, I won't be riding up that elevator by myself anymore, someone's gonna have to escort me up there, and I thought that was kind of funny, because over time, you always wonder if you're gonna get stuck in the elevator. Anyway, on a more serious note, we did have a discussion, and I, I think I'm within range, all those personnel, we're looking for an assist, and I, and Ms. Lee, you might have to correct me on what it's called, but we're looking for an assistant director or a director trainee that will eventually replace, have an opportunity to replace our director, and he shared with me that there would not be any applications coming in. And I wonder, I've always thought that there were certain jobs could have a transfer skill, and I tried to point this out to them, and I say this out loud, Mr. Wood, that if you're writing a, a job description that's so specific to a specific job title, and don't give the opportunity for a broader range, you're not gonna get many applications. And I tried to point out to them that, not just because I came out of the school system, but a good retired principal, a good retired superintendent, or a good retired assistant principal would have had a lot of experience transporting people, dealing with buses, dealing with movement. So I say that out loud so that people out there in the world who might look at our broadcast might go ahead and contact the employment, human resource, us and City, and, uh, uh, make an effort to, you know, get their name in the head for what I think would be a very good position for the right person. So I, I tossed that up. Also, one good thing that has happened, and I just want to always say something, that, that, that I, I think the world of a transport, of public transportation system, I was able to ride around Fayetteville, North Carolina in my youth because we had a fantastic transportation system over there, but they offered, and I think we're still in the process, we're offering some free rides to veterans...
That's correct.
...during the holiday seasons. And, uh...
This week.
This week. So I say that so that everybody who can deserve a free ride, and also, students who are going to Wayne Community College, they need to check with the administration out there because there's opportunities to get transportation, and it's a little bit of a process, but through, through their offices and the transportation office, it gives opportunities for students who attend Wayne Community College to get a ride. So that's very important for folk who cannot afford to transport themselves. So I just want to say that out loud, we're doing a very good job with that transportation system, and, and thanks to the people who are over there doing the real work. Thanks, sir.
I hesitate to bring up this topic, but I am. There evidently are some rumors that are flying around that I am seeking a retirement shortly. I have retired from my business, I have sold my home, I have sold my business, however, I intend to stay actively involved in Wayne County as a commissioner, and so those rumors need to be placed, placed to rest. This weekend, I, you're not gonna see me at the Veterans Day Parade, but my daughter is moving this weekend, and she is definitely more important to me than just about anything, so I'm gonna go assist her in the moving aspect. But I do hate that I am gonna miss the Veterans Day Parade, which is coming up this weekend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm just gonna sound like a broken record and talk about Eastport, I attended that meeting last week, and everything is still on hold, the state has us on hold. I think it would be in the best interest of Wayne County if Eastport would stay put, stay in, stay as Eastport, not merge with nobody. I know we're not gonna go with Cardinal, I don't think we are, nor are we, because there's some issues there that nobody knew about when we started talking about that agreement. And just as a comment, I'd just like to jockey again, on behalf of myself and Craig, we are still looking for support for the outdoor barbecue pit at Maxwell Center. So I need everybody's support, I don't ask for much up here on this board, but...
Commissioner, I think you already have, that's all.
That is in my district, so we need an outdoor barbecue pit that would bring in a lot of resources and would cause a great participation out there, so, thank you.
Mr. Redco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I want to thank the, the staff and the, and the commissioners that attended. We had the pleasure of having lunch with Cindy Whitfield, I think it was Monday, last Monday, she was back in town, and, you know, some of you may, may not know, Cindy was Secretary to the County Manager for many, many years, and we had a good fellowship. Also, this past Friday, we dedicated a safe...
Also, this past Friday, uh, we dedicated a section of the new bypass, uh, in memory of Senator John Carr. Uh, we had a fantastic turnout. Uh, DOT did a fantastic job on getting the signs up the very same day. Uh, but most of all, I want to thank the staff for, for what they did. I mean, it, it, it's, it's amazing. I mean, when they put their minds to do something, I mean, you know, if, if they ever lose their job, they're gonna be off going to the catering business because, I mean, they did a fantastic job. And Carol, thank you so much for, uh, for the time that you put in behind the scenes to, to make that happen. Uh, but it was, it was a great turnout and, uh, very fitting that Senator Carr was honored because he did contribute a lot to eastern North Carolina, Wayne County. And, uh, Thursday night, two weeks ago, uh, my daughter volunteered me to be in a fashion show at the hospital for breast cancer, where this, uh, program that they put on every year. Uh, she volunteered me and then she told me, uh, where I was gonna be and what time. So, uh, last Thursday night was, uh, two weeks ago. Right here is what you saw. I mean, this is, this is it. I've done, I've done a lot of things in my life that I'm proud of, some that I'm not real proud of, but that was a first for me. But it was an honor to be on the stage with, with thirteen women that had, uh, that had fought and, and, and beat breast cancer. Uh, that's my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gerle?
Mr. Chairman, one, I was able to attend the Hundred Fifth National, um, Grange Anniversary Celebration a couple of weeks ago. Had a large crowd, great entertainment, the weather finally worked out for them to be a, a good day for them. But more importantly, my many thanks to that community and that Grange and their involvement in their community. Thank you.
As you know, I was on vacation and it certainly gave me thoughts of retirement. And your stuff is because of the fish you're catching down there. He caught the biggest, uh, speckle trout I have ever seen. They must've weighed eight to ten pounds, I'll tell you. Uh, Mr. Bell, I, I certainly agree with you on the cooker. I think we need to be honoring our new county manager because of that. I've got names for it. He knows what it is. But we did have someone email us this week that wanted to know if there were some things that have not, that paid for yet. And I don't know if this person has been talked to about this particular issue. Anyways, Mercedes came up in my mind anyhow. And I, again, just like, uh, Mr. Aykoff said, staff, y'all did a great job last Friday. It went off without a hitch. You kept the governor line. I appreciate that.
I do.
Okay. Um, we did not finish our closed session. We need to go back to closed session for the same reasons or...
Yes, same reasons.
All right. As I mentioned, go in closed session. I was a favorite, no, you discussion, I was a favorite, right here.